Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for February 18th, 2020. Holy smokes. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. This evening, we begin our meeting with a public hearing to discuss ordinance 02020-08, restating and revalidating ordinance 02018-52, and the approval of special use permits to allow the operation of a gas station and restaurant drive-through facility, variations from the Warrenville zoning ordinance, and a site plan for the Thorntons Gas Station Development at the southwest, southwest corner of Illinois Route 59 and Duke Parkway. May I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing? Alderman Widener?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Voice vote for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing mode, and we'll start with a staff summary of the requests. Our Community and Economic Development Director, Ron Mensah. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall that last November, the City Council approved an ordinance that granted a variety of special approvals for the property located at the southwest corner of 59 and Duke Parkway. Under that ordinance, that ordinance actually paved the way for Thorntons to move forward with a new fueling station project that would have a ancillary, quick-serve, drive-through restaurant component to it. The ordinance that was approved granted a variety of special approvals, including a special use permit for a planned unit development, a number of zoning variations, some sign variations, landscape relief, and the rezoning of the property. Under the provisions of the Warrenville zoning ordinance, if a project that receives those types of special approvals does not move forward and obtain its building permit and begin construction within one year, those approvals automatically become invalid. Upon informing the applicant of this after that one-year period had expired, the applicant expressed a strong interest to move forward with the project and submitted a letter for the City Council's consideration requesting that the approvals be revalidated and they be allowed to move forward with the project, consistent with the plans and approvals that were previously granted under ordinance 2018-52. I can say from the city staff perspective, we have no objection to this. In fact, we support the revalidation of the approvals contained in ordinance 2018-52. A portion of the reason the project hasn't been able to move forward in as timely manner as we'd like to see it, would have liked to see it move forward, is because of the city's involvement with the project. The city is actively negotiating the potential acquisition of a portion of this, excuse me, this particular site for a potential new city water tower and well improvement project. And as part of that negotiations, we've been working with the applicant to make sure that their underground utility plans accommodate the utilities that the city would need to have installed to support a new well and water tower on the corner, back corner of their property. The applicant is here this evening, and I think is certainly from the conversations I've had with them, prepared to move forward as quickly as the city can allow them to move forward. Their building permits are in, and I believe are ready to be picked up, subject to the city's review and approval of the revalidation ordinance that's included in the agenda packet materials.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Does the applicant have anything to add to that? Please come up to the podium. Identify yourself.
My name's Todd Smoots. I'm the project manager with Thorntons. I just wanted to dovetail on what Mr. Mensah said previously there. We've put the project out to bid. I've evaluated the bids, and we're within budget. And so, pending final board approval on the 20th, you know, we see no problems with moving forward. So, we're anticipating starting construction pending your approval in mid-March. We've entered a long-term lease on the property, so we're obligated. So, I just wanted to show you those measures that we've taken and demonstrate to you that we're serious about the project and moving forward.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any questions from the council for these folks? Alderman Goodman?
I was just wondering if the Thorntons in West Chicago, just down 59, was owned or operated by the same people who are doing this project?
Yes, ma'am. It's operated by Thorntons LLC.
Okay, but in terms of the specific project managers or the construction, is it going to be done in the same fashion? I went over there just to take a look in preparation for this, and I thought, even though it's still a pretty new facility, it's in quite good condition.
Well, ma'am, we bid it to a few Chicago-based contractors here that we've done business with previously, and one of them's the parent low that has built stores for us before, and we hold our contractors to a high level of quality, so I think it'll be very much like that store that you visited.
I hope so. Thank you.
Anyone else in the council with questions? Public questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Could I have a motion then to close the public comment portion of the public hearing?
I move to close the meeting, hearing.
Close the public comment portion of the meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the public comment portion of the meeting is closed. That would be the time for any comments or deliberation from the aldermen on the request. If you don't talk now, then you'll have to take this off the consent agenda to make your comments later. So, anyone wish to say anything at this point? Very good. We are on to the next part of the meeting then. Thank you. To be received by our very own Phil Kukler. Good evening, Phil. Proclamation Engineers Week, February 16th through the 22nd, 2020. Whereas engineers use their specific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters, cleaning up the environment, assuring a safe, clean, and efficient sources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. And whereas engineers are encouraging our youth math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century, now therefore be it resolved that I, David Elbrumel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim February 16th through February 22nd, 2020, as Engineers Week. Phil, thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to say something about your skills?
No, I just, 10 or so years ago, I was the first engineer hired on staff by the city, and now we're actually at three registered professional engineers in the state of Illinois with Christine Hocking and David Romero, and David recently, at the end of last year, received his professional engineering license. So, we're up to three on staff, which is pretty amazing. So, thank you for recognizing Engineers Week.
You do great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, in keeping with our plan for eventually getting approval for our budget for the coming year, we have two budget presentations this evening from two separate departments. We'll begin with the Finance Director, Kevin Dollstrand, for the Finance Department, followed by the Chief of Police for the Police Department. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our department is usually seen as the boring department by most people. We don't build anything. We don't pave anything, and mostly people don't consider the accounts all that exciting. We do, however. During the end of fiscal 2019, and after the last time, well, it was before you presented budget messages, we did achieve our 26th consecutive award for excellence in financial reporting. We do anticipate, and that was for our 2018 audit report, we anticipate receiving our 27th award for our 2019 report, which we should be hearing about in the next month or so. Also, as a result of that, or not directly as a result, but in a company with that, we did come before you and ask for your approval to extend our audit engagement with our current audit firm, Lauterbach &amp; Amon. Our first engagement with them was for five years. It went by very quick. They work extremely well with our staff. We've had great success with them in getting things done correctly and on time, so we will have them again for another five years. The ERP implementation, as you know, has been ongoing in what, at this point, seems like forever. We have accomplished some important steps, however, at this point. One of the biggest ones that we've accomplished so far is we've changed our accounts payable to a new bank and through a new process. Why that's important is it took a big cumbersome account, which we use for all of our accounts payable, and all of our payables, and split them into two pieces. It will make reconciling and keeping track of everything that happens in that much easier to follow and much easier to reconcile. The side note to that is, since November, we've been operating dual systems. We've been putting everything in the new system and the old system to make sure that all of that works the way it's supposed to work. So far, it has. As far as the accounts payable part, there's still a little issue that's hanging with the accounting end of it, but they're working on that as well. We have the task of replacing a 22-year employee who will be retiring in about two months. While it has not been accomplished yet, we are in the process of interviewing to fill that position. She, being Kathy Wearshauser, has, like I said, been here a little over 22 years, is extremely reliable. There's going to be hard shoes to fill in her position. We are working on that and hope to have that accomplished within the next few weeks. In the last two years, I've had to report to you about issues we've had with our meter reading software. I'm proud to say that it's operated extremely well for this last year. Why that ties to me is our department is responsible for all the utility billing. And the Neptune meter reading system, which requires all of the remote readers to be replaced, all of those entries have to be done into our utility billing software as well. We are now up to 4,585 out of 4,0862. That becomes extremely important because within the last few weeks, we lost the use of Aclara, which was the prior system. The remaining accounts between those two, which is about 300 accounts, are scheduled to be replaced before the end of March. So, once that's done, we will be completely done with the old system. All the accounts in town will be on the new meter reading system. We required additional cost to get Aclara up and rerunning, and everything will then be on the new one and functioning extremely well at this point. So, 2021, we'll see a lot of planning work done by the Finance Department, along with other departments and other staff. The fund balance work group is going to be extremely important in this next year. We'll discuss that a little bit more next week at our special budget meeting because we have identified some issues that will require us to pay a little deeper attention to what things are and how they will work going forward. We also have to update the CMRP. The CMRP, as you know, is our Long Range Capital Maintenance and Replacement Plan. It's still functioning well, but there are some things now that need to be updated in that plan because that plan is about nine years old, having first been adopted in 2011. We have a similar plan with the Enterprise Maintenance and Replacement Plan. We do need to update that as well. There's also work on that that needs to be concluded. We didn't quite get as far as we wanted to originally. The intent also was that that would have started earlier in this year, but there's been so much staff time at this point spent on the ERP that we really haven't had enough time to be able to devote to be able to do that. We're going to force that issue during the next year because that does have to be resolved. The ERP itself, again, ongoing. The three biggest issues that the Finance Department will be involved with is going to be payroll, budget process, and the final one being utility billing. Payroll, I will remind you, had a curveball thrown at us as we were a long way into this. Microsoft decided that they were going to stop supporting payroll altogether, which meant we had to start on a whole new path to redesign how we were going to do payroll. It's very complicated to make all those pieces work, since the majority of the work will not be done in our new ERP. It'll have to be done outside of that. As you know, we're contracting with ADP to make all that work, and it's taking time to make all that function correctly. So, our implementation of that is now delayed a little more while we still try to figure out how those pieces work and fit together because it is important to get that one right. Our budget process, which we're working through now, is done the way we've done it for a number of years with big giant spreadsheets and a lot of departmental manual input. Ultimately, when the ERP is in place, there'll be a lot less manual input within the Finance Department for sure, as the departments will be able to input their budgets directly into our system, will not require a lot of implementation and moving around by finance itself. And finally, utility billing originally was not part of the scope of what we are intending to do. However, Mosaic, our implementer, has indicated that they can build that for us and are doing that as part of their Mosaic City implementation. That's going to be a difficult one to work through. There are a lot of processes involved in that. It's not as easy as you just spit out a bill. There's a whole lot of things that have to support that, and those are being worked on right now. There's been at least one shadowing session where they came, sat down in the department, and watched a process we do from beginning to end, and there is another one scheduled for the actual billing process itself in the beginning of March. So, that should happen as well. We will also be participating in the collective bargaining agreement negotiations. Obviously, when you're involved in that, there's a lot of numbers involved, and our department will be highly involved in making sure that those do get done correctly. Again, the accounting clerk, we anticipate that there will be more than a little bit of training here to fill that role after we get the new person on board. I don't think they're going to jump in and know everything right out of the gate, so we do probably, we intend there to be an extended period of time to train that per person. We are doing all we can to hire a per person with a commensurate experience that will make that a little easier to do, but they are, again, going to require training. And finally, we started to work on this already, and I want to get back to it again, which is a rewards program for our credit cards. We currently have a limited number of staff who use city-issued credit cards, and we'd like to be able to get the city onto some sort of a rewards program that pays us back for everything we buy. The problem we've had so far is our volume isn't enough at this point, so hopefully, when we get the ERP in place, we get all our purchasing procedures in place, and we may be able to expand how that works, which then we'd be able to expand our volume of what we buy and then will allow us to participate in an awards program of some kind. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Council, any questions? Alderman Wilson?
Insofar as the completion of the ERP program, do we really look forward to that being solved this particular year now that we're coming up on? Do we think we'll reach the end of that trail?
I'd like to say a resounding yes. I'm not sure that I can say a resounding yes. I can say with great certainty that I think we'll be done with the core functions of all of this, which will be all the financials and accounts payable will finally be tied into everything else, accounts receivable, and purchasing, which is functional but not quite ready to go because it needs to tie better with our general ledger. As for the Mosaic City side of the equation, which as you recall is the community development side of this, I think that that's going to extend a little bit more into the year. I'm hoping that by the end of fiscal year, it'll be done, but right now, I can't say that for sure.
Alderman Goodman?
Yes, under Tier Two on the department work plan are a couple of items that you didn't mention in your presentation, so I guess just maybe a little bit more information about that. You've listed adoption of procedure for disposal of low-value city property to be under city administrator authority. Is that the, you know, recurring police department seized items that we approve for bids?
It's the, yes, it's where we dispose of police vehicles or we dispose of other equipment, old computers, that kind of thing. We want to work toward a more administrative process to do that so it does not have to come before the council regularly do that. It should be easier to do than it is.
Okay, and then the second thing is consolidation of all city fees in the city code? Is that something that the city attorney is going to need to primarily do, or to what degree is the Finance Department going to have to spend much time on that?
Well, the recommendation originally came from the attorneys, that it would be easier when we update any fees. It'll be easier to update a fee than it is to update it at other places in the ordinances. The way we'll be involved is we're going to need to make sure that as those fees are updated in the original time this is done, that they're in there and they're accurate, and then we would also help them maintain them going forward.
Okay. Those sound like good initiatives. Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, thanks so much, and we are delighted that someone gets excited about numbers. Chief Torano for the Police Department. Welcome, chief.
I use the podium because I've been known to speak with my hands, and if I'm holding the microphone, I might have an injury here. Okay, well, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you very much. We're going to go through a synopsis of our budget presentation with our accomplishments for this current budget year that we're in, fiscal year 2020, as well as some of the initiatives and also our work plan and as standard procedure. If you have any questions, when we're done, we'll be happy to answer those for you. We start off with just a brief montage of photographs of officers that have been involved in a number of our community events, and you can see we're actively engaged in many things here outside of the day-to-day activities of the Police Department. For our fiscal year 2020 accomplishments, in 2019, we were very blessed to continue to have a very, very low crime rate. We've collaborated with the other city departments, not as much as Finance and Administration, but Deputy Chief Jacobson has spent a considerable amount of time working on the ERP project and also the website redesign that has currently been implemented within the city. In May, Sergeant Comar graduated from the Northwestern Center for Public Safety School of Police Staff in Command. This is a 10-week, 400-hour class. It's an executive development program, very prestigious program, and if you see, in all police chief recruitings, they'll usually ask that the candidates have obtained graduation from either Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command or the FBI Academy. So, these are the two most noteworthy institutions, and we get people here from international students that come from overseas to attend the School of Police Staff in Command. One of the great things about this is they're required to do a comprehensive project that could assist their own department. Excuse me. What Sergeant Comar recommended is that we go to an electronic database for the field training program and that we're able to do all the daily observation reports on our new recruits so that we take up less paper volume rather than having these huge paper binders with daily sheets of activity that is logged, and it also makes it much easier to retrieve the data and also review it with the recruit. So, after he put this program together, we were able to implement it at the department, and it is currently in use now. One other thing just about the training and the professional development that I'd like to touch on, if I were going to list every school that every officer attends during the year, I'd have pages and pages and pages. Every officer, we make it a goal to get them a minimum of 40 hours training per officer, and these can be a number of things, from field operations to legal reviews to public employment law reviews to search and seizure laws and what have you. So, I'm very proud of the fact that I think our officers are extremely well-trained, and this goes on a continuing basis, and I try to report those in the weekly reports that you see. In June, we implemented the new countywide records management system, and there've been a few bugs in it, like anything else with technology programs, but we've worked it out, and it has been, excuse me, significantly better in the way we're able to access reports and data from other police departments and other county agencies. In July, we passed the Illinois State Police Information Technology Security Audit. This is for compliance of department information system that's transmit, receive, or store criminal justice information. It's basically to make sure that our policies, procedures, and practices are in line in order to securely store and transmit this data over our computer system or the lead system, and we did pass that. There were no violations with that. In August, we formulated and launched the DuPage Metropolitan Emergency Response and Investigation Team, known as DuPage Merit. Been extremely busy since then. They've had well over 50 call-outs from different agencies throughout the county utilizing them, from everything, from lost people that have been endangered, Alzheimer's patients and what have you, in which we use drone technology with infrared sensing to locate these people, homicide investigations, police officer-involved shootings, major crash investigations, digital forensic investigation as far as computer crimes and what have you. So, been very, very busy. This is something that's, I think, been a great asset to all of the communities within DuPage County. The fees for this are not any greater than they were when we belonged to the fiat in the Major Crimes Task Force. So, it's cost-neutral, and we've got a task force of over 300 people that are willing to respond and very highly trained. Our forensic investigation unit team members include Detective Cat and Officer McCurus. One thing I think is noteworthy, and our detectives participate in this too, is that these evidence technicians have gotten as much experience since August that you would get in a large-city police department. They have worked on, I believe it's 11 homicide call-outs, either officer-involved shooting or homicide call-outs. That amount of experience, while the incidents are tragic, that amount of experience is invaluable, and that most suburban police officers would never be able to get their invaluable in that most suburban police officers would never be able to get that kind of exposure and experience during an entire career. Also, in August, we were acknowledged as the safest city in the state of Illinois, which was very nice to be recognized in that way. Officer Dan Dimerikas was released to solo patrol. He successfully completed his 20-week field training program, and in September, he's out on his own now. Also, in that month, we hired Christina Smicker, who was our newest police officer, who graduated December 20th from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy and is currently in her 20-week field training program. In November, we were able to get a partial grant, and a lot of this was because of the incident that happened in Aurora, which is right next door to us. We were able to purchase six ballistic shields and carriers that are kept in the squad cars for our officers. We now have them in every marked squad car that is out on the street. And as I said before, that was partially covered by a grant by the Illinois Public Risk Fund Safety Grant. Of noteworthy, as far as training, two of our officers attended the U.S. Department of Energy Office of Radiological Security Alarm Response Training at the Y-12 National Security Complex in Tennessee. This is based on the fact that we have a radiological institution here within Warrenville, and that is the Northwestern Medicine Facility on Weaver Parkway. All of the training for this and the costs were covered by the federal government. So this did not cost the city in Warrenville a penny for the training, the lodging, the meals, or the transportation for these officers. In December, Detective Cat completed a very prestigious accreditation commission for traffic accident reconstruction, which is known as ACTIR. This is a five-year program that requires engineering-level mathematics that's basically able to get Officer Cat to go out to a scene, and he can do a scale reproduction as far as estimating speed, reading the data modules within the motor vehicles, and able to give us a very, very timely and accurate type of accident investigation. We utilize these in fatal investigations, serious injury investigations, and he's also a member of the DuPage Merit and works on the Major Crash Investigation Team. Part of this distinction is that he's able to testify as an expert witness as far as traffic accident investigation and reconstruction in the United States and the Canadian legal systems. So for our FY 2021 goals, right now, we're in the process of establishing a new police officer eligibility list. Our last one was exhausted. The application deadline is for February 14th, was February 14th. The orientation and the test will be held on March 7th at Hubble Middle School. I believe we have approximately, I believe it's in excess of 90 applicants right now that will be testing. We will have two vacancies that we will be filling due to one resignation and one retirement. We're going to fill those two vacancies from this newly-established two-year eligibility list. We have to conduct a sergeant promotional test that'll expire in November to establish a two-year eligibility list. Again, the last sergeant that we have on the department that hasn't gone through the School of Police Staff in Command, they will be scheduled to go through this year. That way, all of our sergeants will have received their training. We have to work with the Assistant City Administrator in negotiating two collective bargaining agreements for the officers and the sergeants' unions. We're going to assign one police officer to the DuPage Merit SWAT team, which I think will be an excellent opportunity for career development for that officer and also to bring that experience back to the Police Department. And we seek to hire a part-time EMA coordinator. Part of this had to do with the retirement or the resignation of a police officer that was handling those responsibilities. He went on to take a position at Argon National Lab as their security director over there, which is a good move for him, but it left us in a quandary in that we don't have anybody with that amount of expertise that could oversee this. This position would be 20 hours or less per week. We're looking at hiring either somebody that had supervisory or command staff-level experience at either a police department or a fire department that would be able to come in, make sure that all of our city personnel are meeting NIMs requirements as far as the federally-mandated incident command training, as well as making sure that our records are in order, the trainings are scheduled for our EMA personnel, and as well as recruiting new personnel. And they would also be scheduling the events that the EMA participates in. We have to complete the mandatory expungement of cannabis records. These are for juveniles that had misdemeanor cannabis arrests. That's quite an undertaking, is that basically we're going through all of these records in the records department and pulling these files and then having expungements to be sent to the court to have the records removed by the state. We want to expand the use of speed awareness monitoring devices, and I talked a little bit about this in secondary and residential streets. These would be by the semi-permanent pole-mounted, solar-powered units that would be up there. We're looking at seeing if we get some grant funding for that, which we're hopeful that we can do. But I'd like to start off with two streets to put those on. One on Batavia Road because the houses are kind of close to the street, and it's a heavily residential area that has a lot of trees. The other one I'd like to put on Continental because it's going to go past a school, and it's kind of a curvilinear street there. And I eventually would like to put these where all of the schools are, so that, again, it's just a nice reminder of what motorists are doing as far as their speed. We're going to continue to update and create user-friendly Police Department website pages. We're going to identify and move non-emergency service requests to an on-light website submission. And this would be things like the alarm user applications, the I We Live Alone applications, and also vacation house watches. This will be easier for the residents. They don't have to call in and make these requests, but they can simply go to the website and fill these out, and then we'll have them. And we're going to continue to participate in the safety and community-based initiatives, and these are things that we're doing on a regular basis, just like our neighborhood roll calls and National Night Out and Summer Days, Fourth of July Festival, and what have you. I've listed these for you. Excuse me. Yeah, could you go back one, please? There you go. We look at some of the safety base and the community-based initiatives, and, you know, when I talk about it, it's hard to remember each and every one of them, but when you look, it's a fairly significant list of things that we're doing on a regular basis to keep pace with. So these, again, are just some of the things that we're going to be doing. We talk about our FY 2021 decision package, and I talked about that EMA coordinator. We looked at that. Again, this just kind of memorializes what I had talked about, gives us an estimated annual cost. This is a no-benefits, no-pension, part-time position, not to exceed 20 hours per week. We listed out some of the position responsibilities and the impact that that would have of not having it, and we feel that this is something that, you know, would be a very, very positive and necessary position for the city. Any questions that I may answer for you?
Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Chief. I'm always impressed with the community-based initiatives that your department undertakes. It's nice to see the officers out in the community, and every experience I've had, they've always treated the people they're dealing with with the utmost respect, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I don't immediately see, although it's probably hidden here somewhere, and there it is, the elementary school safety visits. Could you just talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
And the efforts that your department makes with regard to that?
Sure. What we do is we go in and we're talking to kids from a very young age. One of the things that, while we always want kids to be safe, when you're dealing with very small children, you don't want to be going in and when you're doing what they call ALIS training now, which was active violent encounter-type thing. It's basically the rapid response training. You don't want to do things that are going to be traumatizing the kids. So we like to spend some time with them, allow them to meet the police officers, talk to them in a very low-key setting. They can ask questions just about police work and what have you. We explain a little bit of what we do, and then we talk about the reasoning, kind of then gradually walk them through some of the drills. And again, it has to do with safety and making sure that they're safe and potentially, while we hope it never happens, that we would be able to, you know, go there and prevent such an incident from taking place. In addition to that, we try to make as many stops at the schools on a regular basis just to interact with the kids. In the warmer weather months, you know, you'll see our officers stop by if there's an outdoor recess going on or something like that. And I think this is a very important aspect of community and law enforcement in that if you get the kids to know the police officers from an early age, they get more of a positive type of impact from the officers in that, you know, we're there to help them and not just be enforcers of the law.
Seems like a fine line to walk. I know there's been reports of kids being traumatized by the, you know, education and the different drills that they go through, and I'm very glad to hear that you're sensitive about that and leading them through there. And then, you know, I think a lot of their fears can be put aside by the frequency of the contacts with your officers. So, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Chief, thanks so much. And, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Wilson.
Just one question. Do we have any idea about retirements in the future that we're looking forward to for officers? I mean, I know that we have the list on here, but are we anticipating retirement of a specific number of officers?
We have a couple of people that have the 20-year goal as far as their service years. This all is kind of difficult because, you know, we don't go out and ask them, per se. A lot of what we get is just kind of anecdotal, you know? We'll hear secondhand information, and you really can't take anything, you know, for granted until you actually get something in writing. But if we do, I don't think within the next year we would have more than one or two. You're welcome.
All right, Chief, thanks so much. And again, thanks for making us number one in a very, very important category.
Thank you, Mayor.
Safety. Okay, we'll move along to citizens' comments for this evening. Mr. Bob Seabird.
The Warrenville Park District would normally receive the following yearly funds from the new residential developments. Lexington Trace Townhomes, $55,572. Everton Apartments and Townhomes, $140,940. Earhart Homes, $63,423. A total of $259,935 per year. Since these developments are in TIF III and TIF IV, the Park District will not receive these funds until the TIFs end 18 to 20 years from today. Since the Park District is required to service new residents, we add $85,000 to the yearly total of $259,935,000 new residents at $85 per capita. Also, we will add a yearly fee for the 1 million-plus impact fees that the city of Warrenville is taking from the Park District, or $66,600 per year. A grand total of $411,601 per year for 18 to 20 years. A loss of total funding to the Park District of $8.2 million-plus dollars over the life of the TIFs. At the end of the TIF, the residential properties only pay their normal share to the Warrenville Park District. From the taxpayers in the Warrenville Park District's position, the $8.2 million of forced investment will yield 0% payback on the $8.2 million and 0% return on the $8.2 million. The Warrenville Fire Department is in a similar but worse financial position because of the TIF District's residential development.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments. Just a reminder from me that tomorrow night at 6:00 PM begins my annual State of the City address. Everyone is welcome. Takes place right here in City Hall in this chambers. If you're not able to physically join us, you can watch it later on at your leisure on our YouTube channel. It will be available there, but it's a good way to catch up on what's happened in the past year, what's coming up in the coming year and the years to come. It's always a lot of fun for me to take a look at what's happened and the good stuff going on. So come on down. 6:00 PM is the social hour. 6:30, the presentation begins, and it lasts about an hour, but from my perspective, it's an hour well spent, so come on down. Clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Treasurer?
No report.
Thank you. And Alderman. Okay. City Administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And City Attorney?
Just to note that I'm sure you've all seen the engagement letter that's on the agenda this evening, and I just want to say how excited and thrilled I am about the new firm and that I look forward to answering any questions you may have when it comes up on the agenda.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right, let's go on to the agenda then for this evening. Alderman Widener.
I move to approve the agenda for the February 18th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ashauer.
I'd like to remove 7C and postpone it until after the executive session.
Let's try that again.
7C. In the regular agenda.
It's on the regular agenda, not on the...
Oh, okay.
He's reprimanding the whole agenda right now, so I guess I can...
Okay. Are you making a motion then to make that change?
That's right.
He wants to postpone discussion of 7C until after the closed session. Is everyone willing to go along with that? We're just moving it on the agenda to a different spot.
Right, correct.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with that?
Is there a second?
Do we need a motion to do that?
So moved.
Agreement. All right, well, let's do it. Let's do it, and then there's no question. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second just to change the agenda to discuss 7C after the closed session. Does everyone understand? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, done. Anyone else? Okay, then, all in favor of the agenda as approved, as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Boy, you changed the routine. Okay, very good. The agenda as amended is approved for this evening. Let's move on to the approval of a couple of sets of minutes also. Alderman Widener.
Motion to approve the minutes of the February 3rd, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the February 10th, 2020 Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02020-07, approving a one-year extension to Speedway Special Use and Variation Approval Ordinance 02019-03. Approval Ordinance 02019-03. B, waive second reading and pass ordinance 0202008, restating and revalidating ordinance 02018-52, and the approval of special use permits to allow the operation of a gas station and restaurant drive-through facility, variations from the Warrenville zoning ordinance, and a site plan for the Thornton's Gas Station development at the southwest corner of Illinois Route 59 and Duke Parkway. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02020-09, amending the contract with Waste Management to change the service day as proposed. D, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2020-07 endorsing the DMMC Legislative Action Program for the 2020 Legislative Session. E, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2020-08 supporting Illinois House Bill 3851. F, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R2020-09 approving an employee leasing agreement extension with GovTemp USA through May 1st, 2020. G, accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass resolution R2020-10 approving the reduction of the public improvements bond for the Lexington Trace Project. H, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R2020-11 approving the contract with Train U.S. Incorporated for the design and installation of the Police Department HVAC system for $373,122. I, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, authorize the Plan Commission to conduct a public hearing to consider staff recommended amendments to the Warrenville zoning ordinance Section 2B8. J, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation to authorize staff to begin recruitment efforts for a summer engineering/stormwater intern in the Community Development Department. K, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee to recommend and authorize staff to advertise for bids for the 2020 Road Program project prior to formal approval of the fiscal year 2021 budget. L, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on January 14th, 2020. M, receive and file report of invoices paid up to February 12th, 2020 in the amount of 600, excuse me, $65,746.87. And N, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before March 2nd, 2020 in the amount of $157,524.52. And O, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of January 2020 in the amount of $9,266.11. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bromel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. We have a roll call, please. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Creswell?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. What are you waiting for? Get to work. And welcome to Warrenville. Okay, we have a regular agenda item that needs discussion. Does someone like to make, would someone like to make that motion? Item 7A. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation and pass resolution R2020-12 approving an agreement with Elrod Freeman LLP as the city attorney, replacing Holland and Knight, and authorizing Elrod Freeman LLP to access and transfer the city of Warrenville files from Holland and Knight to the new firm.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, a new adventure, Brooke.
Yes, and I just want to, I'm sure you've hopefully read our short memo explaining the transition, but the sort of self-contained group of local government attorneys at Holland and Knight have all moved over to a new firm, Elrod Friedman. There are 10 of us, all of the attorneys who currently work on Warrenville business have moved with us and staff as well. It's really exciting. Today is our first day open officially, so I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any questions. Just know that we're thrilled and excited to continue to provide top-notch legal services to the city.
Great. Alderman Goodman?
Yes, my only comment has to do with the fees. I saw in the retainer agreement that the flat fee monthly retainer amount is guaranteed through the next year, to the end of next calendar year, and I just want to express my opinion that I think a retainer arrangement is the best way to continue going forward even thereafter as opposed to going on a purely hourly basis. I think that that's the city's preference, and I hope that your new firm will continue that policy going forward.
It's our preference too, and I think it makes a lot of sense for us and for the city.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Great, thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? All right, congratulations, Brooke. We look forward to working with you going forward.
Thank you very much, thank you. Appreciate it.
We have a motion and a second. Could I have a, I don't need a roll call for that, do I? Voice vote?
That's fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're all set. Potential discussion of the FY 2021 Citywide Work Plan. Again, this comes up on every agenda, just in case you have something you wish to discuss. If there is nothing at this point, Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, just that I, and I raised this with John before the meeting, I noticed some parts of the Citywide Work Plan that seemed to be in the wrong place, and just to have staff verify that, on page one of two of the Citywide Work Plan, completed or removed initiatives, there's a lot of things listed under completed which I think were removed, so hopefully that can just be redone because we obviously haven't completed any of these items that were removed from the work plan.
Okay.
Also, it's my opinion that, you know, more discussion should be had about some of these changes and new ideas at the budget workshop, not workshop, the budget meeting that we're going to be having on the 24th, just so everybody understands the financial implications of some of these changes to the Citywide Work Plan and why they had to be made. We'll be talking about that on the 24th, and we will be talking about the relative durability, I think, of some of these items, and the city council is going to need to express policy preferences to make sure that they're in line with what we're going to be able to afford to do this fiscal year. Because given our financial constraints, we're not going to be able to do everything that we had planned to do, we're not going to be able to do everything that we were hoping to do, and we aren't, we aren't making those decisions lightly, but we need city council input about those priorities going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, item C, 7C, is going to be after closed session, so we have nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, but we do have the need for a closed session this evening. If we could have the citation, please. Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 I L C S 120/2 / C / 5, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Creswell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, we are now entering into executive session. When we come back out, we do have one item that we will be considering.[1153.57] we do have one item that we will be considering. This is the Warrenville City Council meeting for February 18th. I'm sorry, the clerk is not ready. I saw her sit down. I thought she was ready. Nothing happens till the clerk is ready.
Absolutely. Nothing's recorded until the clerk is ready.
All right, the clerk is ready. So, City Council Regular Meeting for the city of Warrenville for February 18th, 2020, coming out of executive session, returning to open session for the purpose of a final motion for the evening. Who would like to make that motion? Alderman Widener?
I move to accept the Community and Economic Development Director Mensah's recommendation and authorize staff and the city redevelopment attorney to terminate the current purchase agreement for the former Sitco property at 28 West 244 Warrenville Road and negotiate and execute a new purchase agreement with an extended due diligence period.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Any discussion? Alderman Goodman?
Yes, if it was just part 1 of the motion to terminate the current purchase agreement, I would be in favor, but since I am opposed to section 2, I'll be voting against the motion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are done this evening with no more business to transact, so thank you for your attention and see you the next time.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Got a little ahead of myself.